Good evening, Sarito residents and the member of our community. I'd like to call to order the Thursday, January 9, 2025, 7:00 PM, City Council and Success Agency Regular Meeting. The invocation will be led by City Clerk Cindy Nava.
Please rise and bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we express our thanks to you for the health and safety of those gathered here this evening. We also humbly ask that you provide comfort and strength to and watch over those affected by, and all of the first responders who are combating the wildfires impacting our neighboring communities. Amen.
At this time, I would like to ask my fellow members and City Council staff and our community to join me in a brief moment of silence. In this moment, we will honor the lives we lost, extend our thoughts to our neighbors, who will work to rebuild their community after this tragedy, and we express our gratitude to all the brave first responder and pray for them during this unprecedented wildlife times. Thank you, and I will call now to Girl Scout Troop 135 in Podium for the letter of present of vigilance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce yourself? Please be seated.
My name is Rachel, and I'm a senior at Rosary Academy, and I have been a Girl Scout for two and a half years.
My name is Chelsea. I'm a Girl Scout, and I'm in ninth grade, and I go to Rosary High School.
Hi, my name's Lori Lynn Lim. I'm also a Girl Scout. I go to, I'm in eighth grade. I'm in, I go to Carbonita Middle School.
I'm Elizabeth, and I go to, and I'm a Girl Scout, and I'm in seventh grade and go to Oxford, and I've been a Girl Scout since sixth grade.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will you please contact the roll call?
Council and Agency Member Barrows.
Present.
Council and Agency Member Johnson.
Present.
Council and Agency Member Yokoyama.
Here.
And Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Voe is noted absent for the record. Mayor and Chair Solanke.
Present.
Would the council like to entertain a motion to excuse Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Voe from the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion made by Councilmember Barrows and seconded by Mayor Solanke to excuse Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Voe from tonight's meeting. And the motion passes on a vote of four to zero.
Okay. The next item is the presentation. We have presentation, right, for 5A? The Girls' High School girls' flag football team in just their second year, the Gar High School girls' flag football team achieved an impressive milestone by completing the CIFA playoff for the first time after completing the season with a record of 14 to six. The team demonstrated remarkable growth and resilience in reaching the CIA playoff after finishing their first season with a 1-6-1 record. This achievement is a testament of their hard work and commitment to the excellence. So we'll have a proclamation. So can I have the Girls' High School, what is it, Flag Football Team come forward? Who's the captain here? I'll hand it over to you. Would you like to say something? Any of you want to say something or coach? No? You do? Yes?
So we didn't know that we were going to get to speak, but on behalf of all of Gar Flag Football, I think I speak for everyone when I say we're really proud to have gotten this far in our season. Unfortunately, we ended second round, but it's still a really big achievement on our part, and we want to thank all the parents and Coach Lexi and Anthony for all of their support. Thank you.
Why don't you get down here? We're going to have to call all the other council over here. Can you please step down? Can I have my council colleague for a photo, please?
Five, go. Ready. One, two. One, two, three, four, and five.
Can I take one for the district? One, two, three. Perfect.
We do have the certificate for individuals. I'll just hand it to you, and you give it to everyone, okay, please? For all the girls. Then I think the Assembly already gave you the certificates from over there. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the information update on Tuesday, March 4th, general municipal election.
Thank you, Mayor. This presentation will be given by City Clerk Cindy Nava.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight's update on the Tuesday, March 4, 2025, Sarito's general municipal election will include information for Sarito's voters on two upcoming voting periods. If you would please direct your attention to the screen, as we hope most Sarito's voters are aware at this point, this March, Sarito's voters may cast their ballots for three members of the City Council and two charter amendment ballot measures. To obtain more information, please visit the city's website at saritos.gov/election2025, call the Office of the City Clerk Elections Official, or email election2025@saritos.us. Part of our voter outreach has included weekly social media and TV3 updates. The information shown on the screen was recently posted in effort to inform Sarito's voters they will soon receive ballots in the mail for two different elections. When State Senator Janet Nguyen won an election to an Orange County Board of Supervisors seat officially declared last month, she vacated her state senate seat, creating the need for the state to call a special primary election for the seat in Senate District 36. As the senate district serves Sarito's residents, active Sarito's registered voters will, beginning January 27, be mailed vote-by-mail ballots for this election. This is a special primary election, which will be followed by the special election to be held April 29. Beginning February 3, active Sarito's registered voters will also be mailed official ballots for the Sarito's general municipal election. In just a moment, I will discuss voting options and dates for each election. If opting to vote by mail or use a vote-by-mail Dropbox voters should be especially careful about proper placement of ballots in the correct envelopes for each of the upcoming elections by their respective election dates. The California Elections Code has stringent requirements for the appearance of ballots and envelopes. The image on the screen displays a return envelope for the Sarito's election containing a Sarito's logo and address. Ballots containing votes for Sarito's City Council and city ballot measures must be placed in this envelope. Ballots containing votes for state senate must be placed in the envelope containing the county logo and address. A side-by-side comparison of options for voting in both upcoming elections is provided on the screen. I do realize there is quite a bit of information to see here, but I will attempt to break this down in a more digestible manner. First, we will compare the in-person voting options. The county is set to conduct in-person voting for the state senate election at two vote centers, one of which is located in Sarito's at Don Kenaby Regional Park from February 15 through 25. On State Senate Election Day only, February 25, the Way Out Ministries in Hawaiian Gardens is also scheduled to be open for in-person voting. For updated information on open vote centers for this election, we encourage the public to visit lavote.gov or contact our office. Though the city's election is being conducted as an all-male election, for those who prefer to vote in person, we'll be open for voting during regular business hours in the City Clerk's office Monday, February 3 through Friday, February 28. We are also offering weekend in-person voting Saturday and Sunday, March 1 and 2, in the City Hall main lobby from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM, which will continue in the main lobby on Monday, March 3, from 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM, and on Election Day from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Voters opting to vote in person for the city election should bring with them their Sarito's vote-by-mail ballot and return envelope. For both elections, vote-by-mail drop boxes will be open 24 hours per day at the Sarito Civic Center and Sarito's Park East until 8:00 PM on Election Day. Our office has an excellent working relationship with the county, and we've been working together to develop a secure ballot retrieval and exchange program at these drop boxes. Lastly, voters may mail ballots for both elections free of charge. Ballots must be postmarked by the respective election day and received by the appropriate entity within seven days after the election. Again, voters opting to vote by mail or use a Dropbox should be mindful of placing the ballots in their respective envelopes. Remember to place your single race ballot in the county envelope and your city ballot with votes for multiple Sarito City Council seats and two ballot measures in the city envelope. Our office will be continuing efforts to keep Sarito's voters informed throughout this election season. Aside from providing regular updates at each City Council meeting, we've placed information on the city's website and have been working with our wonderful Communications Division to provide regular updates on the city's social media outlets and TV3. Beginning next week, we will also be attending the city's commission and committee meetings to provide informational election updates. We will also be attending upcoming city events such as the Martin Luther King Junior Day Ceremony and Festival of Friendship. We also sent postcards to over 14,000 Sarito's voter households. Finally, the official sample ballot and voter information guide for the city's upcoming election is now available on the city website in seven different languages. Sample ballots will be mailed to Sarito's voters at the end of this month. This concludes tonight's election update. We encourage Sarito's residents to visit the city's website for information on the Sarito's general municipal election. We also welcome calls and emails to our office during regular business hours as posted. I am available to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, for the report. Anyone has any questions?
Yes, please. Thank you for that report and that update, Madam City Clerk. You talked about how we're trying to inform our 48,000 Sarito's residents, about 36,000 which are registered voters, 36,000 registered voters in our city. We're trying to inform them about this upcoming elections that are going to be happening. As you just explained to us, we're going to have an election in Sarito's in February, we're going to have an election in Sarito's in March, and then we're going to have an election in Sarito's in April. And, you know, you talked about how we're trying to inform them with, you know, these screens on social media and screens on Channel 3, and that is not direct voter count, that is not direct voter contact to provide our 36,000 voters with information. That's why I was happy to hear that you said we sent, you said we sent, the city of Sarito sent postcards to 14,000 households. We sent them postcards. Could you elaborate what were on those postcards? Was it one or more postcards, and what was on those postcards, please?
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, Councilmember Yokoyama, thank you for your question. What was on those postcards? That was, the intent was twofold. One was to inform every Sarito's registered voter household of the upcoming election and what's going to appear on the ballot, but also to encourage voters who, who have, it contained a list of every single registered voter who resides in the household, and we did receive over roughly around 70 phone calls and emails from concerned residents who have voters listed in their household who no longer reside at that address. What we do with that information is we have provided it to Los Angeles County because they are the official registrar of voters, and they have informed us that they will proceed to conduct their procedures to update their voter rolls.
Okay, so again, I just want to be clear, and I want the residents to have the information who are watching this meeting, whether now or on recording. What information was on the postcard in addition to the registered voters that were listed at the household? Did it explain the upcoming March City of Sarito's municipal election in the context of the other two upcoming Senate District 36 special election elections that are going to be happening in February and April?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Yokoyama. These postcards were mailed in November, and the special senate district election was called in December, so unfortunately, the timing. We, we can, at the direction of the City Council, certainly send additional information to registered voters. However, I will note, well, at the time the original postcards were mailed, we did not, the election was not yet called, and we did not yet have the information. However, in the official sample ballot, we did include information on the two elections, and that is being mailed to every single Sarito's registered voter.
What, what, what is being mailed to every single Sarito's voter?
The official sample ballot, which will be mailed in just a few weeks, will be mailed to each Sarito's registered voter, and we did add, in light of the special election called, we did add information in the official sample ballot.
Okay, so as of today, the only thing that our residents have received from the city was one postcard that was mailed in November?
Thank you for your question. In the mail, yes, that is what they have received to date.
Okay.
Aside from, I can add, the Sarito's News, monthly, since I believe we started in December, we have included articles, the Sarito's News, I believe goes out to each Sarito's resident, and we have included election updates in each of those monthly newsletters.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. So, you know, I, I, you know, I, again, I was against this March 2025 odd-year standalone election that's costing our taxpayers $120,000 more than a consolidated election in November or in the primary of last year. What I, what bothers me and what the residents don't deserve, the Sarito's residents don't deserve, is the city of Sarito's is paying $120,000 more for this March 2025 election, and what I've been informed by the city of Sarito's, by City Hall, is that our residents are going to be getting less in our municipal election, our city of Sarito's election in March of 2025, than if it was a consolidated election run by the county. We are getting less, but we are paying $120,000 more. And why are, why is the city of Sarito's not providing our residents, our voters in our March 4, 2025 municipal election? Why are we not providing them same-day voter registration like the county? Why are we not providing them the ability to vote by provisional ballots like the county? Why did the city of Sarito's not list the candidates for the city council election during the filing period like the county does? Why don't we have more than one voting center? Why don't we have voting centers in our city so our residents have the ability to vote nearby their homes? Why don't we have multiple voting centers for in-person voting like the county would have provided? And why can't our residents, our voters, vote at a county voting center during the special election voting period that's going to be happening in February up through February 25? Why are we spending $120,000 more for our March 4, 2025 City of Sarito's City Council election, and we're getting significantly less in our election that's being run by our city of Sarito's? Can you please help me understand why our residents are not getting what they deserve?
Thank you for your questions, Councilmember Yokoyama. This election in March was called by the City Council as an all-males standalone election, and being that, the city does not have the statutory authority to register voters. The county is the registrar of voters, and that is granted to the county by the state. I would argue, however, that residents have direct access to us. We get calls daily from residents. We communicate with hundreds of residents each week who have questions about measures on the ballot, the candidates. We provide them direct contact information for the candidates. We are fully accessible to residents Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM. We will also be making appearances, as I said, at upcoming meetings and upcoming events to provide information. The county is wonderful, but I, I don't know if you could call the county and have somebody pick up the phone on the first ring and answer the questions as we are. I'm not here to argue standalone versus consolidated election. Whatever the city direction the City Council moves to in the future, we will work to provide our residents the best election, whether it's consolidated, whether it's standalone. We will work to provide everybody the most information that we can in the best manner that we possibly can. There are simply certain statutes that are granted by the state to the county and not the city.
Okay, well, you know, I understand that, you know, you're effectuating the policy that was voted on by a majority of the council members, and then that's your job. And thank you for working hard with you and your staff. But I still have to point out, you didn't answer my question. I listed five, just, just, I listed five ways that I've been informed on why the county, consolidated election with the county would have provided more service and more information to our voters, our Sarito's voters, than this upcoming City of Sarito standalone election on March, that's with the election date of March 4, 2025. So if I can just simply ask, you know, specifically, why don't we have more than one location for our residents to vote? We only have the Civic Center. Why don't we have more than one location? And for example, why don't we, why weren't we updating the residents on our city website with a list of candidates that were pulling papers and filing and qualified during the filing period? Our residents kept asking about that information, and we did not post it on our website like the county provides that information and like the county would have provided, multiple places to vote. So just, I'm just going to narrow down my five, my five items to two. Why don't we have more than one place to vote? We only have the Civic Center. We only have City Hall. And why don't, why weren't we letting our residents know who the candidates were during the filing period?
Thank you for reminding me of your couple of questions that I missed. Historically, our office has not posted information about lists of candidates until we publish an official notice of nominees, which we posted a week after the nominee, or the same week, I can't remember, but I think it was when, within a week of when the nomination period officially closed. And that was well in advance of the statutory deadline, which is at the end of February. So we do have.
Point of order.
There was not, there was nothing.
Point of order, if I can. We do not have an agenda item that we can have an open discussion on, so isn't this something we should ask to be agendized?
Well, this is part of the presentation, and it is under 5B, so there are allowed to be questions. However, in order to provide adequate answers, I would add that, you know, certainly, I can't speak with why the candidate information was not provided during the filing period. I would venture to guess that if candidate information is not completed within the filing period, then it would be premature to list the candidates prior to the end of the filing period. With respect to the candidate, not the candidate, but the voting centers, one was selected, I think it was within the budget, if it is within the council prerogative to provide additional centers for voting, the council as a whole can certainly provide that direction in order to provide more. council as a whole can certainly provide that direction in order to provide more. But this was called as an all-male ballot. Having a voting center at City Hall provides an in-person-like ability to vote, but it is an all-male ballot election.
Yes, and I understand that. I'm just wondering why we are only having one in-person location for our residents
I think we just got the answer that it was in the budget, it was done that, and I really think this is inappropriate to have a one-sided discussion.
There's nothing stopping you from asking questions, too.
Without it being agendized. It's not a question.
Okay.
You're making other statements as part of it.
Okay, so I agree, let's agendize this for the next meeting. I agree with you, Bruce. So could we agendize this for the next meeting? So we can have.
No, we're not agendizing for this. We're going round and round on these things for the last six months.
Bruce mentioned agendizing it. I'd like to agendize it.
Frank, you're out of order.
Would you like to agendize it?
No, I don't.
Would you like to agendize it?
No, thank you.
Would you like to, okay, so we have three people who'd like to agendize it.
Who's three?
Linda.
It's two.
Bruce said, Bruce said we should agendize this.
It should be, he didn't vote for it.
So you don't want to agendize it even though you suggested?
Election is in next month, month from here. We're not going to have enough.
I asked for consensus to agendize this. Bruce, do you agree?
I don't have a problem with agendizing.
Linda? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else has, Linda, you have any questions? Thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience have questions regarding this? Okay. Come on forward.
Al Barlevi, thank you for opening the floor on this item. I want to say that I'm in agreement with Councilmember Yokoyama. I'm extremely disappointed with the level of service that we're getting for this election. I'll start off with the fact that I'm disappointed that we don't have better coordination with the county. The county has a voting center for the special election. We should be able to coordinate with the county so that any resident who goes to vote for the county's special election can also, at the same time, vote for the city election. I don't know why we're not doing that coordination. It seems like it's something that we should be able to do. And just like Councilmember Yokoyama said, it seems that with this standalone election, we're not getting the service that we would have gotten had this been a consolidated election. I, as a serious voter, was very interested in who's running during the filing period. I wanted to know who's running, and I was not able to find that out. It wasn't on the website. I didn't know until it was all, the filing closed. I'm disappointed that we do not have in-person voting centers. I think we are falsely advertising that we have an in-person voting at the city clerk's office. The city clerk is not set up for it. She even said that the voters are expected to bring their ballots with them. I guess the city clerk can give a substitute ballot, but that's not the same because the office over there is set up with a very small counter. So if 30 people show up, they'll overwhelm the system, and I assume that basically they'll say, please, it should really be advertised as an in-person drop-off. And finally, I'm disappointed, in fact, I'm more than disappointed, I think we're in violation of the law, maybe technically we found a loophole, but state law says that you have to have same-day voter registration, and we're not implementing that. So city clerk said that, well, because the, because she doesn't do the voter registration, she can't do it. But again, she can coordinate with the county. So to me, that's not an excuse. So maybe technically the law doesn't require that, but I think we should be able to get that service of same-day voter registration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, good evening. I do have an actual question, I promise, but let me just start by saying that most of what I wanted to say, Councilmember Yokoyama, has shared a lot of those concerns. But I do remember going across the street to CCPA when we were having this discussion about the date of the election, and we were promised that we were going to get concierge election service that would be, that would be catered to the city of Cerritos and that we could get better services than what the county could provide. And I just remember rolling my eyes at the word concierge services, like, really? The county is huge. The county registrar of voters, like, does their thing, and to presume that we would get more, doing it on our own, just seemed ridiculous to me. And so then when I, when I see that we're actually getting less, it brings me back to, what was that, over a year ago, when we were having these discussions then? The in-person weekend hours are way shorter than what the county can provide. I don't know where the city clerk's office is, but, you know, usually, voting centers in LA County are at places that have big signs, and you know they're there, and you know the location. So this just feels different. And again, it seems like we're paying more to get less. So it's more expensive for less services to the electorate. And so I've said it before, I'm all about having more ways for people to vote, making it a time where more people will vote. So I'm just still upset that we even made the move. But that brings me to my actual question, which is about Measure J. So Measure J says that election dates can only be changed by putting something on the ballot. But can only council put stuff on the ballot, or can citizens put these on the ballot as well? I have extensively searched the city of Cerritos website, and I cannot find that information. I have searched the city of Cerritos charter, and I cannot find that information. If we are advertising Measure J as something to, like, bring the election control to the citizens, that feels extremely disingenuous because I don't know how the citizens would be able to have any control on that. And then we'd have to go through another one of these more expensive, less services, pay more to get less cycles to even be able to, like, put it on the ballot to change it again. So J seems like a mess, so that is my question, is, can citizens do it? How do they do it? Yeah, I don't know. Also, city of Artesia is way smaller than us, and they update their candidate lists online daily, so we should be able to do that as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, I was hoping I'd get my question answered. Okay.
Well, if I can interrupt, we can't answer the questions just because it's not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
It has, item has to be.
We don't open this up for even discussion. All we're doing is working on presentations, and some updates. The item's going to be able to discuss it because I can answer some of the questions right now, but it's not on the agenda. We're not allowed to do that by law.
Okay, I just thought the clerk was going to answer our questions like she did for talking.
All right, with that, I think we'll go to item 5C.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 5C is an informational report regarding the ongoing project on the 605 freeway off-ramp at South Street. We have members of Metro here with us in the audience who are here to present that information. And with that, I will defer to the team from Metro, and we have our city staff running their slideshow.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers and serious community. We were here a couple, a few months ago in early 2024, gave you an update on the project, and we're here to give you another stats, update on the construction phase now. My name is Michael Tahan, I'm the Senior Director, Construction Management with Metro, LA Metro overseeing this project, and join with me is a Metro team, I'll do some of them. Ron Masias is our Community Relations Manager. Olga Oreo is our Community Relations Director. Bilal Abavidhi is our Resident Engineer on the side daily. Paul Sullivan, my boss, so as well as he's our Deputy Executive Director, he oversees our highway program. And with us is Josatel, our designer. So we brought the team here to give you an update and stats on the project that we've been working on. And with that, I'm going to have Ron start, and I'll be jumping in throughout the presentation. It's a brief presentation, so we'll take it from there.
Great, thank you. As Michael stated, I'm Ron Masias, Community Relations Manager on the southbound I-605 South Street Off-Ramp Improvements Project, which is a highway construction capital improvement project in the area and within the cities of Cerritos. As far as a project overview, the project is designed to ease congestion, enhance safety, and improve traffic flow and mobility in the area of the southbound South Street Off-Ramp. This project is among the projects supported by the public through Measure Ballots R, whereby the voters approved the support for funding of such infrastructure, transportation projects. And the project is, entails 0.8 miles, which ranges from the southbound South Street to slightly north to roughly around 183rd Street overpass along the freeway. Next slide, please. The project offers many benefits. The project will construct an additional lane on the southbound South Street Off-Ramp. So ultimately, when the final improvements are complete, there will be a total of four lanes on the off-ramp, two turning lanes in each direction, which will play a role in promoting safer driving conditions and alleviating congestion at that area, that section of the freeway. Next slide, please. Also, the project provides local street improvements at South Street and the southbound South Street Off-Ramp. These improvements are designed to enhance safety, both vehicular and pedestrian at that section of the intersection. And these improvements include wider crosswalk for improved visibility, an ADA compliant ramp at the sidewalk intersection, upgraded street lighting, traffic signal optimization, which is to improve traffic circulation at that intersection, which is being coordinated with the city of Cerritos and Caltrans. And also, a yellow border is being added at the backplate of the traffic signal for improved visibility. Next slide, please. And this exhibit gives you a depiction of the existing traffic conditions along the freeway. As you can see, with the current configuration of the off-ramp, there is a propensity, tendency to create a high level of queuing and backup along the freeway at that section there on the I-105. So our project is intended to address this and to promote safer traffic conditions and to alleviate that congestion, that bottleneck there along the freeway. Next slide, please. Now, for the current and upcoming construction phases for the project, we have currently been operating or under construction, under a construction phase that started since August of last year, where we have been primarily constructing retaining walls and a drainage system along the side of the off-ramp and the freeway at that location. We have been maintaining the existing three lanes of traffic along the off-ramp during construction. Pretty soon, we anticipate moving into the next phase of construction in March of this year. During this phase, we will be further building out the new lane on the off-ramp. And we anticipate being in this phase for roughly 10 days. And during this phase, there will be a need to reduce the travel lanes at the off-ramp from three lanes to two lanes, which is needed, necessary to build this new lane on the off-ramp. So upon the completion of this phase of roughly 10 days, we will move into the next phase and final phase of the project. And in this phase, we will restore the travel lanes back to three lanes during construction. And this will be the last phase of the project as we move into, anticipate a construction completion in the springtime of this year. Next slide, please. Here you see a rendering of the new off-ramp. There's the additional fourth lane being added, two turning lanes in each direction along with the wider crosswalk and the ADA compliant ramp at the intersection. Next slide, please. And here you see another rendering from a different vantage point from the north of the lane, or the new travel lanes leading to the South Street there. Next slide, please. And I will turn it over to Michael to present this.
Thank you, Ron. And so as Ron mentioned, we started construction in July 15. Our contractor was there first day on the site. And we were roughly about 50% completing the project, almost halfway in the project. We are looking at stage 2A to complete that. We completed that in August, and we're moving very quickly to stage 2B, as Ron mentioned, around March, where we're going to be reducing lanes. That's a very short stage, it's only 10 days, five days for each one to transition traffic for two lanes and then do the work on the other side and transition traffic. And finally, hopefully, we'll be able to complete the project roughly by around May time of this year, which is per plan, per schedule. So we appreciate that. And then after that, there'll be a planned establishment period for one year, so we'll be maintaining that area for that. And we continue coordination with Caltrans and the local communities on that. Next slide, please. These are some of the construction activities we see. We just want to share some of the pictures with you, just see some of the activity we have been there. I myself and many of the team members have been out there at night. We had major construction going on, concrete closures, things like that, so we can show some of the construction that we have for some of these construction projects, retaining wall construction that we had to go through. Next slide, please. Some other progress pictures you can see here, retain some of the work to be done with the retaining wall, footings and things of that nature, pile drilling, and these are items of construction we're dealing with, and maybe if you drive by, you can see some of them there. Next slide. As well as some of the drainage system installation that we're doing for the project. Next slide. And like with every project, LA Metro is committed for extensive community outreach and partnering with our local communities, and we have a big effort that we've been doing for the last few months, in the beginning of the project, before the project, and with that, I'll have Ron touch base on that.
Yes, we continue to conduct community outreach to engage the public regarding the project. We, of course, have been coordinating with the local cities, municipalities, city of Cerritos, Artesia, and the city of Lakewood. We have been coordinating with key stakeholders in the vicinity of the project in the southbound South Street Off-Ramp. We host community meetings on a regular basis. We intend to have a next community meeting next month. More information and details regarding that meeting will be available soon. We've been out at a community events, engaging the public regarding the project. As you can see in the photos, we have the Community Relations Team out there at the Cerritos Health and Wellness Fair, also the Artesia National Night Out Event, as well as others. We send out construction notices, e-blast with the latest developments or new developments regarding the project, as well as social media posts and a website that's updated with the latest information.
If I may add, the key coordination for us was with the Auto Mall Center, as well as Los Rita Small. We did extensive coordination with them throughout the project, from the beginning, working closely with all the dealership and the management there, as well as with the mall. And we, part of the restrictions we had on the project was to make sure we maintain certain traffic limitations during the holiday season, and I think we were able successfully to be able to do that. I just, I was, would be missed if I didn't mention, Marcus Ochoa is our lead person for our community outreach. Some of you may have met him, or he's leading that effort on a day-to-day basis with Ron in the field, but that's been successful, and we haven't heard any complaints, and we've been closely with the dealerships, as well with the Los Rita Small, too.
Next slide. And that is how the public can get in contact with the project. There's the project phone number, email address, website, social media credentials, and we have not received any complaints from the traveling public with respect to this project, and we appreciate you allowing us to present and provide an update with you, and we appreciate the working relationship with the city of Cerritos and ongoing coordination to deliver this project for the public.
Well, you may have not received any complaint, but my city manager receives complaint from me because I take that exit every single day. And I know one of your director at CAG and Metro promised me that it'll be done before the holidays. So holidays come and gone, so why this project got delayed?
It was supposed to be done, started construction in May, and the contractor couldn't get the paperwork in, our contractor, so they had to go through paperwork and with other. So they had to go through paperwork and with other stuff for the PLA and things of that nature. The delay was because of that paperwork that our local contractor, the lawless response that they could not get on board and to get their paperwork in.
Yeah, because during the holidays, you know, that exit get busy, and we had to back up all the way to the 91 freeway. And we had to have extra sheriff at the intersection to, you know, direct the traffic. And so I did call our city manager and our enforcement department. So thank you, anyway. Did you have a question?
Yes, I want to thank you first, thank you for the report, you know, the update. The question I have is that we've, I assume as you guys coordinated with Caltrans, modify the lanes, all the lanes on the freeway to where they kind of bend around, you know, where the start of the construction is. Every time I've been over there, which is several times a week, the cars are wandering because they can't see the lanes. You know, the markings are very poor, and there's no notification. So I'm assuming that this is a liability risk, you know, and a danger to, you know, those who drive through there. Is that something you guys can fix? Because it looks like it's going to be there for a few more months. I mean, right now, the lanes are marked with, I think, a very light white paint. It's mostly worn off. And if you, you know, watch the cars, I say every time I've been there, numerous cars are not in their lanes. They're wandering, you know, off of it.
Thank you. Bilal Ababidi, the resident engineer for the project. So there's actually another project ongoing on the 605 freeway. It's a stop replacement that goes all the way from the 105 to the county line. So they have been doing stop replacement along the corridor, and they actually have scheduled for restripping next week. So that stripping will be refreshed.
You're saying next week?
Yes, it's on the schedule.
That quick, okay. That's a quick response. Okay, now, the second one that you may know the answer to is they resurfaced a little bit, I'm hoping, in preparation for the interchange at the 605-91. It's very rough concrete or asphalt.
It's called a high-friction surface treatment.
And it's also down at Carson for the exit there, going, you know, southbound to get off on Carson. Is that something that they're going to finish at some point?
That's the other project.
That's the other project from Caltrans. That's not within our project limits. So there's a lot of work on the 605 by Caltrans and.
Yeah, I know it's Caltrans. I just wondered if you had an answer for it.
Yeah, we can talk to our counterparts in that project, which we coordinate with on some of the closures. And so we can get back that to Alvin and provide that information.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? No?
Yes. Okay.
Yes, please. So yeah, thank you to Michael and the team for this update. I know the city council and the residents of Cerritos have been wanting to get an update about this very important project that is important to our city of Cerritos. And it's going to be such a wonderful, shiny, new off-ramp into our city coming by spring of 2025, correct? That's going to help all of our visitors to our Cerrito shop at our Los Cerrito Mall and shop at our Cerrito's Auto Square and get into our city, to our parks and our library and our CCPA. So thank you. I just wanted to confirm with this detailed presentation, and thank you. I loved to see that this project includes safety enhancements to our City of Cerritos local streets. And I just wanted to confirm that the project budget of $33.2 million, funded by Measure R and the state hip funds, is covering everything, including those safety enhancements to our local streets, and nothing's coming out of our City of Cerritos general funds.
Yeah, everything within our project limits, yes, is covered by that budget that we've established by LA Metro, yes.
Okay, thank you. So you heard that, Robert. We don't have to spend anything out of our general funds. We don't have to spend any of our taxpayer dollars out of our general funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the public comments. Thank you for your attendance tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or conduct that disturbs the conduct of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call for a recess to restore order. After that, the chamber may be cleared if disturbance continue. Before we open public comments under six, I will call upon the city clerk to provide additional information concerning public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. The following comments pertain to all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. The mayor will open comments at appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the city council and be made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Agenda item six, public comments, should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. This concludes the public comment information, and the meeting is now returned to the mayor to open public comments under item six.
Okay, I will now open the public comments on this item. The first speaker we have is Teddy Lloyd.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Happy New Year to you all. As I was reading the Cerritos news, and I found out, caught my attention, and I'm so happy, is that the city council has appointed Cynthia Navar to our city clerk. I have known Cynthia since she was at Liberty Park. And I'm very, very happy. And then I even went to, when we were discussing about the election coming out in March, and I even talked to Cynthia. She was extremely helpful, and I really want to thank her for that. And I, you know, as a part of the, you know, Cerritos residents, I'm very happy. And then she did help out us residents a lot. And I know, you know, earlier you were discussing between, you know, discussing about what the change will be and on and on. Because most of us residents, we really don't know it. We just want to know, when is it? And then, so I'd like to see the city to make it a little more clearer for us residents because for most of us, we thought the election was back in November. And then so we didn't really pay much attention to until I received a card from the City of Cerritos. And then I went, because it stated to, if you have any question, talk to the city clerk. So I did. And then I want to thank Cynthia. She was very helpful, okay? I wish the other residents, I would definitely let other residents know, okay? And then, yes, I do hope maybe make it a little more clearer for us what it would be like in voting and then all of that. Because I personally did think it was, the election was back in November, but now we've got to do it for, you know, March. And also, as I was reading this, and I discovered that the city council actually approves three positions, including the city manager, Robert. I know Robert, I like Robert, okay? And I, I'm glad that there are three positions representing us residents, and I am very happy to know. Because most of the others, I thought, whoever, you know, what they got to do with us residents. And then I believe this, it also went out to see the city attorney, and then hopefully I get a chance to meet with the new city attorney and, you know, for other residents, okay? So now I do know that the city, actually, those three are most likely for the residents, the residents we have. So I got to know the city manager, I know the city, you know, clerk, hope to get to know the city attorney, okay? I will introduce to all my residents. I know many residents, I know so many residents in Cerritos. So in any case, thank you very much. And then I hope everything worked out great. Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alvaro Levy. All right, Rocky Pavon.
Good evening, Mayor Norris Solanke, Bruce Barrows, Lynda Johnson, and Frank Yokiama, councilman. My name is Rocky Pavon, and I am a loving, caring, passionate, God-driven servant leader. And I'm here to just give gratitude to you all for serving on the council. I know it's not the easiest job to have in the city, managing the city and also Robert manager, city manager, city clerk. Indeed, appreciate all your support in the city. Tonight, I come saddened but also concerned. Right now, we're witnessing one of the worst fires ever in the history of Los Angeles County, costing an estimated $8 billion in losses. And roughly about 180,000 Los Angeles County residents are under evacuation orders to leave their homes and take whatever they can. In addition, another 200,000 residents can be forced to leave their homes, too. So my heart truly goes out to all these families. But tonight, I want to specifically talk about the Cerritos residents and give heed and caution in terms of safety reasons, not just because of the air pollution, which is affecting my wife's asthma right now, but also to the fact that during tragedies, when tragedies like this occur, law enforcement is really focused in on helping those who are in dire need at this time. But I also want to urge the city residents to make sure that they're alert because this is the time when criminals may take advantage of the situation. And knowing that the law enforcement is busy trying to, you know, adjust and take care of the situation of those that are in need, criminals see tragedy as an opportunity to burglarize, steal cars and other belongings because they know that law enforcement is focused on helping those in the dire need. I personally was burglarized. Years ago, I was burglarized. And also, my daughter's catalytic converter was being sawed off, and criminals almost got away with that as well. So right now, I just want to let you know that safety is my number one top priority in the city, and I am here to assist the council in any way I can to make sure that we make this city of Cerritos a safer community for all of us to live in. And the rest of the time, I'd just like to dedicate the time that I have left to those who are suffering now, who lost their homes, who lost their belongings. Also, those who are fighting to assist those in dire need right now. I'd like to just have a moment of silence for all of us to just think about what we still have when we go home tonight. Thank God and be grateful for what you have. You still have a home, you still have your belongings, and you still have your loved ones at home waiting for you tonight. Thank you.
Next is Catherine Pasqual. Thank you. All right, that's all the speaker. Do I have, Madam Clerk, is there any correspondence, anyone, anything?
Thank you, Mayor. We have not received any correspondence on this item. We did, I will note for the record during a later item.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for item seven, consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have motion and second.
A motion was made by Councilmember Barrows, seconded by Councilmember Johnson to approve the consent calendar items. And the motion passes on a vote of four to zero.
Okay, next item, we don't have a public hearing tonight. We do have new and old business on item 9A, Mr. Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item 9A actually follows up on past direction given by the city council. The city council previously considered information and possible ideas as relates to pickleball in the eastern side of the city. The city council then directed a more focused review of locations within Cerritos Park East. So with that, the presentation this evening will be given by Recreation Services Superintendent Sherry Titus. And she and Ms. Hilton and I, following her presentation, would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Before you, as an opportunity, as Robert mentioned, to discuss details relative to a request to install pickleball courts at Cerritos Park East based on the city council's direction. Just a little reminder and update. At the regular meeting of the city council on May 23, 2024, the council reviewed several city-owned facilities on this east side of the city. After lengthy discussion, the council settled on two possible locations for pickleball courts at Cerritos Park East. And those were the passive grass area adjacent to 166th Street and the current site of the non-operable spray pool. Prior to making any definitive plans, however, consideration of possible locations of the facility was deferred to the outcome of a thorough review of the water features by an outside firm. The Aquatic Design Group provided those services. They are a Carlsbad-based firm with 40 years of experience in aquatic facility project design and management, as well as engineering and construction administration. Their comprehensive review began in April 2024 and concluded in August of 2024. After their thorough inspection, they found significant regulatory challenges present at all three of our locations, including those that surround health and safety code concerns, building code deficiencies, and compliance with state water conservation guidelines, specifically the drought and the Americans with Disabilities Act. I will note, as it's outlined in the report, that these water features are not operating right now and have not been for more than 10 years. So just a note of caution there. They estimate project costs associated with the full reconstruction of each water feature at approximately $1.5 million to bring them up to code. The cost for complete removal of the existing elements is between $50,000 and $75,000 today. It might be more as things go up and inflation exists, and that's per location. As noted in staff's comments in May of 2024, the city's water features are currently non-operational. And due to the significant fiscal impact, staff is recommending not refurbishing the water features. Just a little note about the Liberty Park spray splash pad. Liberty Park was renovated and opened in February of 2005, so it's going on 20 years old. That particular splash pad has had its issues since we opened. A lot of it was the design. Much of what we dealt with was the subterranean control system where all the pipes were and all the electronic components, the humidity, and so on and so forth. So that one has worked intermittently. Our public works department tried in earnest to make the repairs, so to make it operable. So it was working for a little bit, then it was, it would go off. So it's just not been operating for many years. Now that the information has been provided on the water features based on Aquatic Design Group's assessment, we can now resume discussion regarding the two areas at Cerritos Park East as potential options for pickleball courts on the east side of town. If I can direct your attention to the PowerPoint presentation, we can take a look at those two areas. This first slide is your Exhibit 1 of the staff report. It's an aerial view of the park, highlighting the location of the existing spray pool right in the middle there. I know it's a little difficult to see, but it is in your attachment on your agenda report. This next slide is a ground-level view of the spray pool and the existing landscape amenities. It's adjacent to the basketball courts to the west, and to the south is one of our baseball fields. To the east of that is another passive grass area. And these areas are generally used for small picnics and gatherings and other passive recreation used by parkgoers. These activities would be restricted or unavailable if the courts were installed here, but we consider this to be the most suitable location if the council so directs to install pickleball courts there. It is close to the community center building. There's restrooms inside, and it's adjacent to the parking lot, which are two things that we find to be the most important when deciding whether to put pickleball courts in a particular space. If you recall from May of 2024, parking, restrooms, and proximity to homes are the three areas that we concentrated on. I will mention, while I'm speaking about Cerritos Park East, I don't have it in my comments, but upon Robert's appointment, he and Dario and I walked all 36 of those acres to look for a location that would be best suited based on the request that came from the community. So this is what we got. And the next slide is going to be Exhibit 2 in your report. It is the northeast passive area highlighted in blue. It is adjacent to 166 to the north and our main playground to the south. This area, generally away from the street and closer to the building, is a very popular location for small family gatherings due to its proximity and sightline to the playground. There's a slightly elevated mound in a couple of these areas and several mature trees, as you can see in this photo, that would require removal at an additional cost. Should the council consider this area, as we outlined in the staff report, a safety fence would be required just because it's so close to 166. just because it's so close to one sixty-sixth street. Staff, however, feels that the overall aesthetics of the park would be adversely impacted if the courts were installed in this location. The next two slides um, outline the city's current pickleball locations. And um, we started off with three pickleball courts at Liberty Park. We now have five. If you recall, um, you directed and it was approved that we convert what we were going to make a passive recreation area down at the south end of Liberty Park, which was a former location of one of our picnic shelters into two pickleball courts. So those have been installed. Um, the courts at Liberty are free to play. Um, they're first come, first served. Our hours are as follows. Spring and summer, we're open daily from ten AM to eight PM. Fall and winter, we're open Monday through Friday, ten AM to eight, and Saturday and Sunday, ten to six. The next slide is um, information regarding Don Canaby Community Regional Park, formerly Regional Park. And um, the county installed and converted their challenge courts, if you remember, to ten pickleball courts. Their hours are roughly seven AM to ten eight and ten PM daily. Um, there's drop-in play. Um, there is a charge, no reservation required. They do do reservations. It's a very, as you can see, extensive process to secure a pickleball court. They do have free play times on a first-come, first-served basis. They are generally in the non-peak hours when people would want to play. It's in the middle of the day and during the summer, it does get warm. You can have monthly passes. It allows players to reserve courts and play during times at no additional charge. They've got lots of options there. That ends the PowerPoint. And uh, just in conclusion, the sport of pickleball has certainly grown in popularity, um, so much so that there are over three hundred pickleball courts within a fifteen-mile radius of Cerritos, with many being constructed um, soon in our neighboring cities. For a city like Cerritos that's nine square miles and a total of fifteen outdoor pickleball courts, I believe that we accommodate the needs of the residents who desire to play. One thing that is not in here because it is an indoor opportunity is um, the community gymnasiums at Cerritos and Whitney High School. When we have the opportunity to offer drop-in pickleball, we, we do offer that. We are right in the middle of our basketball season for our youth, but there are times when people can go to the gyms indoor and play, just in case the weather is, is not permitting. It's therefore recommended that the Cerritos City Council review and discuss the information provided in the report, receive public comment, and direct staff accordingly. That concludes my comments. Mr. Lopez, Ms. Hilton and I would be happy to enter, answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry, for the report. Uh, do we have any question from the council?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sherry, thank you for that report. And uh, putting it into context of all the pickleball courts available to our residents and visit- visitors within the city limits. What is your recommendation, uh, if we went with the pickleball court at Cerritos Park East? Uh, where currently there's a spray pool. Uh, what is your recommendation regarding the thirty-four thousand for the fencing? Should we go with the fencing? Or not for that spray pool area pickleball court?
If, thank you for your question, council member. I would not recommend installing any fences. Um, there are inherent liability issues when you install fences, especially a low fence, and you certainly don't want to put a six-foot fence in the middle of a park. Aesthetically, it, it kind of, again, similar to the northeast um, passive area that would be off of one sixty-six. It just ruins the aesthetics of the park. Um, if you know the park, all of our baseball fields are um, kind of come together in a little bit of a cloverleaf in the center. So the fences are not facing, um, like the outfield is facing the park and it, it just lends to this um, just a more desirable uh, look to the park. And all of our parks are like that. So I certainly would not install a fence. Um, unfortunately, people don't always use the amenities the way they are intended. We have kids hop by go- hopping over fences. Um, you know, it's, I just would not put something there um, in the middle of a park like that. Um, especially because we get a lot of walkers at that facility. Not just the track, but the perimeter and the interior of those walking areas and sidewalks inside the park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? And then, I'll, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sherry, i- i- just to elaborate a little bit more, you know, we used to have our Fourth of July ceremonies over there. And one of the reasons we left was the misuse of the parks. And th- this, I think, would, you know, e- even though it's seniors using, but I think the actual, what you're describing physically would kind of bring that back again. So I, you know, I personally support, you know, your observations that, you know, the park, I think, is attractive the way it is. It's why I've been advocating we should look, you know, and work with the county, you know, at another site. Uh, i- and in the past, working with the county and the power company has been a challenge. You know, it's taken years and a couple of cases, you know, to successfully, you know, complete negotiations. And so i- in this case, I, I believe we're gon- we're headed in that direction. Again, this one here is I, I think staff is, is, is really hit it on the head. You know, when you look at the, the sightlines from one sixty-six, it, it just doesn't work. And if we do have to take out the the little hills there, that's where the tree roots are. We don't take out the roots, you know, along the, you know, people's homes because of the damage, the chance the trees will fall. So that there's a lot more to it than that's being said so far. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alright, I will open up uh, for public comments on the item, if anyone would like to speak on this item. Okay.
Catherine, again, I just have one question as to why the pickleball courts at Liberty are not opening until ten AM. Um, given our current climate, it would be really nice for people to be able to get out there on those courts uh, before the heat strikes. And so I think that as climate gets hotter, we need to, as a city, really recognize that and do as much as we can to have our courts and our facilities that are outdoors be available to residents before the heat of the day and after the heat of the day. Um, like was noted during the presentation. Um, the other courts are only free during really hot times. And so it would just be nice if you pay, play for an hour. By eleven AM in the summer, it's already hot. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
My na- my name is Alan Williamson. I'm glad to be able to have the opportunity to talk to the council members and the city about this issue because I live in that neighborhood. I live a mile and a block and a half from the park. And I go to the park often. I was there yesterday and I was there the day before, walking the place. And I appreciate the fact that fences around the pond would be terrible as far as visual um, look at the, the visual appearance of ta- walking around the park. The um, uh, pickleball is a very, very social game. And there was a brand-new court that was opened up in uh, La Palma less than a year ago. Four courts put on one tennis court. It's already over full every night of the week. Every night of the week, there are between eight and ten people waiting to play on each of those four courts, starting at about seven all the way till ten PM. I go there at four because I have the opportunity to do that, so I get to play quite a bit. But I leave at seven because it gets so crowded. So um, the issue of uh, Canaby Park being in a, a possible um, location for people. Canaby Park is not elderly-friendly. It's not elderly-friendly. My wife and I went there for a full year, paid our money, sixty-five dollars a month, and we quit because we found better places to play that were more elderly-friendly. The um, free sites are very much used a- around this area. There's a brand-new free site over in um, Long Beach that has, I think, al- almost twenty courts. And they just came open and they're not full yet. Uh, what about timing? I don't see a timer. I had an interesting conversation with the park staff yesterday. They said that they wish that those pickleball courts would be put in, oh, look at that. Um, those pickleball courts would be put in just north of their building in the place where you think the fence would be in a, in a, inappropriate. The fence would not be any different than what's already exists at Liberty Park along um, uh, Studebaker Avenue. And that is an industrial park. That is not something that people live and see on that road. So that's, that's not a very reasonable thing. And also, there are no mounds in the area just north of the center. The community center that's there, there are no mounds there. There's three trees. They're that big around. And we could put four courts in that spot. So there's some things to consider. My wife and I would like to be on any kind of group that's able to talk about this more in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I did have a chance to, I am sure we talked about pickleball courts multiple times even last year. Now regarding C- uh, Cerritos Park East, I personally would consider the cost because I, eh, my background, I always look at cost benefit. And I think uh, what's being discussed about that uh, you know, what it is, you have to put in the fence and all that. I think it's of high cost and then low rewards, meaning you only build two courts. Most of the other cities, if you look around and then you look at Central Park in uh, La Palma, you look at many of the other cities, most of them, if not, I call it ninety percent, usually would use a tennis court to make it, it a low cost because all you have to do, have lines painted. So using the tennis court, you have two options. Option one would be dedicated court. That is where you will find, if you go to Rossmore Park, okay? Or you go to Los Alamos Laurel Park, you will see that. Another option is make it dual-use. A, a tennis court can be set up for dual-use whereby you have the lines painted white for tennis and then if the lines painted yellow or orange for pickleball courts. And that would be an example you can see over at uh, uh, Central Park in La Palmer. So I, I would suggest that I would love to get a chance to work with this staff to look into these different options before a final decision is submitted or for approved by the City Council as to CPE. And also, and I remember uh, Councilmember Bruce Barrow mentioned that, what about Don Canaby? Okay, and, and Don Canaby, I'd like to see that hopefully can be part of the Cerritos Sports Complex. And then, and then you do see that the County of Los Angeles not very much interested in handling the tennis and pickleball courts. And if you look closely, it's sports complex, if you draw a straight line, it's divided by the Edison, you know, power lines. And then to the south of it is Cerritos Sports Complex, except the tennis courts. So that's another option we can seriously look into and then we'll combine that with the city of Cerritos. And then after all, taking a tennis court converted into a pickleball, it's rather cheap. And then all you have to contractor can do the line painting and usually that can be done nearly a day or two days. Now, if you want to make a dedicated court, may take a few more days. And I've seen that, done that many times. So I like to definitely spend time with the staff to discuss this, come up with the ideas. Once those ideas are thought of, and I would like to suggest that to be presented to the City Council for the final decision. Okay, so I'll be happy to go through the details so, and if an opportunity is there. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Sinan will close the public uh, hearing, bring it back for the.
I, I apologize, Mayor, if I may note, uh, for the record, written correspondence received.
Okay, please.
Thank you. Uh, prior to the meeting, the council and agency members received full text, unredacted copies of the two written comments submitted for this item by the deadline listed on the agenda and for inclusion in the official record. Requests for copies of written comments submitted for this meeting can be made during regular business hours to the office of the city clerk during regular business hours. Thank you.
Okay, does the council have any additional questions? Alright, comments, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Sherry, for the report. Appreciate it. And thank you to our speakers tonight. I know there's such a passion for, for pickleball. I support pickleball. Uh, I also support programming and amenities at all of our parks for all our residents from ages one to one hundred. So, you know, uh, uh, with the staff report of uh, two areas where pickleball courts could possibly be uh, um, placed, I'm really not inclined to replace a water feature with pickleball courts. Uh, it's such a beautiful area with open space and uh, folks recreate there with picnics or just walking along there. So I, I don't think that would be an appropriate place as well as the northeastern side of the community center off of one sixty-six. Um, that would require fencing and again, that would not uh, you know, look uh, good for our park, especially since it's one of our, it's one of our flagship parks. But I do realize that there's a demand. However, I don't think we should react to a demand and just try to find space just to have courts. Um, certainly, this is a sport that's growing. So maybe we need to kind of take it back a little and uh, have a plan. A plan to build picklecourt, pickleball courts, but also programming with lessons for players uh, young, for our youth that want to learn and for those seniors that also want to learn. Um, and even a plan that maybe would include future tournaments, if that's what the city's interested. You know, we know tournaments bring in economic development to our city. Uh, so it's, it's a plan that has to have, be a long-term plan. So I think we need to take it more outside of the box. Maybe it doesn't have to be at a park. Maybe it's a capital project where we actually create space with multiple courts, like tournament-style courts. Um, you know, once the, 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 a, a while back, years ago, decades ago, Parks and Recreation Commission was um, uh, designed, was tasked to design and also plan our parks. So I don't know if this is something where we just kick it back to the Parks and Recreation Commission to maybe come up with some kind of plan. Uh, or we, maybe we have an ad hoc committee. I, I don't know. That's something that um, I'd like to uh, ask our city manager what would be best. Um, or maybe we even need the assistance of maybe an outside consultant to help design. But it certainly is a capital project, but I, I really am not in favor of just trying to find open space somewhere and put pickleball courts, especially when it's only two, two here, two there. I think it has to be something big. Um, so I feel that if we're gonna do it, we do it right. And Robert, is would you, if, if we were to move forward on some, on such, if I got council consensus to uh, have a discussion on a bigger project, capital project plan, is that something you would recommend that I ask the city manager to work with staff? Or would you recommend an ad hoc committee or maybe kick it back to the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Um, well firstly, I would uh, just go back to the, the direction that was provided by the council last year to look comprehensively at multiple locations, which we did. We came back and talked about pros and cons. Um, the challenge, as it was pointed out, is that um, most of our open spaces are embedded within neighborhoods and the noise impacts from pickleball is, was a concern. It's one of the factors that's looked at. Um, so we have done a, a comprehensive review, let's say, of our existing park sites. Um, if the council is interested in looking at other types of properties, we'd, I would want to receive very clear direction. Um, we don't have anything in the budget as, as, as of now to purchase property. Um, if there's interest in using existing property, probably park sites do make the most sense. But again, we have done that review. Um, if there's other specific areas you'd like staff to look at, we'd be happy to, you know, report back. Um, if that direction's given, in which case I think it would make sense to, you know, at least start at the staff level uh, for in- initial information. And then if you want to involve other groups, whether it's a commission or an ad hoc committee, um, you know, that, that City Council can provide that direction.
Okay. Um, I don't know what my colleagues think. I mean, do you think, I mean, I'm even thinking even in the industrial area. Is there anything there?
Uh, the city doesn't own industrial property that is not already used for other purposes. So we, we do own properties throughout the city, commercial industrial properties, but they are uh, being rented for revenue for economic development. Um, we don't have any um, surplus property, let's say.
Okay. Colleagues, what do you think? Kind of want to know what you guys think.
If I can, are, are you done?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, temporarily.
Temporarily. Mr. Lloyd, you know, he shared before about the tennis courts and over at Liberty Park. Sheri, have, have we, do we have, you know, any kind of numbers that show what the usage is, you know, by tennis players?
Yes, I don't have those with me, council member, but our tennis courts are, are very well-used. We, I'm, was waiting till we got our new city attorney. But the documents for the RFP for a new tennis instructor are ready to go. And we do need to revamp that program, which was discontinued due to COVID. So had a lot of change going on and those documents and things are ready for her review. So we will be revamping that tennis program. You know, I, I, I just, I feel as though our goal to the council member's point is to provide amenities for everyone, you know, that are visiting our parks. And I feel as though we have adequate coverage for pickleball. Those courts are not heavily used all day long. I tour the parks, I literally cover every square mile of the city. Every park is reviewed and, and I'm looking at something every single day. And I pay close attention to those pickleball courts. I would advocate on behalf of a resident or anyone else, because I'm not playing pickleball, if a need, I thought a need, a rot would, you know, has arisen. But I feel as though those courts are used in the morning and to the point of the speaker about the timing. Our park hours are 10 o'clock until 8:00 PM during the week and 10 to 6:00 on the weekends during the winter. But the parks are open at 6:00 AM and people are absolutely out there playing pickleball, walking the track, using the other amenities at that time and, and after we close until 10:00 in the evening. So they are being utilized before it gets warm and they are being utilized when the sun goes down. So we are developed out. I'm not sure where, you know, if we used a park facility, a zoned park facility, we'd have to do something different. But I believe the needs of the community are met and we are always challenged with ensuring that that is occurring. Certainly, Mr. Lloyd has been very, very vocal about the pickleball courts. He's quite passionate. He used to be a tennis player, you know, back when Cindy was a rec leader over at Liberty. But, you know, times change and pickleball is a little bit easier on the joints. And, you know, we, we looked at all the other locations. We, we, you know, the community requested the east side location, the county converted 10 courts. I just feel we have enough. That's my personal opinion and I am certainly not a council member that's going to be making this decision. But if you need my professional words, I feel we have enough.
Sheri, the, yeah, I concur. I've, I've been heavily involved with sports in the city, you know, for a lot of years. And it's just like, you know, anything that's in the eye of the beholder. Certain people, you know, they gravitate towards, you know, whatever the sport is. And I support that we do that. What I don't support is taking our limited resources and buy industrial property or other property that would generate revenue for the city and take it out of circulation. But, and this is maybe where your employer could be helpful, is in the negotiations with Edison. Edison has always been difficult for Cerritos. You know, they work much easier and faster with La Palma. A Rancho Verde Park started between a conversation between myself and the mayor of La Palma at, at a SCAG meeting. We went down after the meeting, had lunch or, you know, a soft drink in the cafe downstairs. We kind of hammered out how to make this thing happen. Edison responded very, very quickly on the Orange County side. It took us much longer on the LA County side. I, I would say that, you know, it, the opportunity to have a larger facility, and I agree that would be appropriate, you know, one that we could hold, you know, a tournament would be appropriate. I, I think we, we should sell, continue to push and negotiate with, you know, the county. That, you know, technically the county and Edison. But the cost to us would be much, much lower. You know, pouring concrete, because we can't do anything outside of something that they can drive on to service the lines that are above it. But we can build, you know, appropriate seating and other facility parts just off the edge of it. That would be the viewing part. And Newport and other cities have done an excellent job at that, in creating a separate facility. And Mr. Lloyd has been very free with information. He's gone to all these facilities. I just happened to pick up a couple of magazines over, you know, the number of months over the last year, looking at what's going on. And then I happen to have a family member that's six to eight years younger than I am, but she is heavily involved with pickleball in two states. You know, they, they summer up in the state of Washington, winter down in Arizona. And that, that's all they do is play a lot of pickleball. And I've heard from other residents, you know, there's a growing demand for it. I recognize it, but if we're going to do it, let's do it right. And to put in two spots or, you know, I don't want to see us to have an industrial look to our parks. You know, we're the envy of a lot of cities. A lot of businesses have located here because of the look of the city, you know, how we operate with them. And I, I think we can continue to improve it. It's going to take some time. But to answer your question about an ad hoc committee or kick it back to the Parks and Rec, because the election and the fact that three of us are not going to be, you know, back on, I think an ad hoc at right this moment would not be appropriate. It'd be something for the next council, go ahead, make that decision on.
Or perhaps, I'm sorry.
I say, but if we can, if you can talk with our supervisor, see if we can start, you know, greasing the sleds to go ahead and put some pressure on Edison. That might give us a way to go ahead and, you know, develop a first-class facility. So I think just adding two courts here and four courts there. And Sheri, you know, to address when you said that the tennis courts are well-used, I, I've heard from residents that they're being misused a little bit. But not knowing the numbers and, and I, I honestly, I don't go over there and watch what's going on. But if that's the case, that we don't really have much room, you know, wiggle room to do something there, why not just focus our attention on a bigger facility? And I'm sure the pickleball committee would appreciate the fact that it might take a year or more to get there. But to have something good would be worth, you know, working towards.
Yes, I agree. This is something that we just let it sit on the consensus list and address again later.
Okay, so. I, I'd recommend that we table this until after the election.
Okay, I agree with that.
That way you guys, you know, the new council can take off on it. But if we have staff, you know, talk a little bit more with Edison.
Yes.
Because based on my experience before, the city manager and staff worked hard to get some concessions made. And not just a Rancho Verde Park, but other stuff. And it takes, takes a while. You know, we're not going to get it done overnight. We're not getting it done in two, three months. But I think our supervisor might be able to, you know, help out and meet the needs of a, a community that doesn't have those needs met yet.
Okay.
All right, so.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to table.
Aye, I second that.
A motion was made by Councilmember Barrows and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to table consideration of this item until after the March election. And the motion passes on a vote of four to zero.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 9B, city manager, do your report on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item 9B is a request for the use of the council chamber as it relates to election candidate forum. The details of this information presentation will be given by Ms. Nava.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, honorable mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is consideration of a request made by the La Palma Cerritos branch of the American Association of University Women, or AAUW, for use of the city council chamber, city staff and resources to facilitate building access, a live broadcast and rebroadcast of a candidate forum relating to the Tuesday, March 4, 2025 Cerritos general municipal election. The city council has traditionally honored such requests from bona fide nonprofit, nonpartisan community organizations such as the AAUW, as candidate forums provide an opportunity to inform the public of the positions and views of qualified candidates seeking election to the Cerritos City Council. The city itself does not sponsor or host candidate forums. The cost to the city to conduct such an event is estimated at $500. We have confirmed the city council chamber and staff are available for such purpose on Tuesday, February 4, at the requested time of 6:30 to 9:30 PM with the broadcast time of 7:00 to 9:00 PM. It is recommended the city council review and discuss the information provided, open public comment and approve the AAUW's request for use of city resources and waiver of cost to conduct a candidate forum on Tuesday, February 4. This concludes my report and the city manager and I are available to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you for the report, Cindy. Do we have a question from the council?
I, I have a question. It's really, there's two. Every election, we come up with an estimated cost of about 500. That cannot be a real number because with inflation, it's got to change. And which lead to the second question, because we have always approved this. Is this something, and Barbara, I want to ask you or, or city attorney, can we just put this on as a, an approved basis in the future without having to agendize it and bring it back if something changes to the council? And do the same if, if we, because right now, we used to have two or three others that did this. They all dropped out. But to go through this, I think is just adding to the cost of something that the council, I think historically will continue, go ahead and approve. So I would rather see this just be, be part of, you know, normal business, you know, put the approval in. Unless something comes up that says there's a problem that you want to bring it to the council.
Yeah, I would, the council can certainly provide that clear direction. I'll defer to Ms. Nava for some background, because I believe the council provided different direction in years past, but they can, you know, that, that direction can be revised.
Yes, thank you for.
I'm saying for all the years I've been on council, it's always been this way. So I'm just saying there's no point, you know, if we just sit down, the policy is that this group has the right to do that in the future, you know, as long as they keep it just the way this is written right now, you know, to meet the same thing on a nonpartisan basis, you know, and so on. It'd be a lot easier.
Thank you for your questions and thank you, city manager. Actually, on November 25th, 2019, the city clerk and city attorney did present a report to the council at the time, who took action to require future city council majority approval of any request such as that before you this evening. I would defer to the city attorney as to whether the council could provide alternate direction this evening.
Right, if you were to provide further direction to authorize the approval of any candidate forum that meets the following requirements, and we list out what those requirements are, we wouldn't have to come back and require council consensus or majority approval moving forward. So we could certainly do that, you know, as long as it's, you know, a certain number of candidate forums. It's limited to, you know, nonprofit, nonpartisan basis. It allows for all the candidates who are on to be able to speak. We can certainly provide an approval process administratively instead of having to come back every single time.
Okay, so you're saying it should be not specific to this group, but to any, any group that meets those conditions?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? None. I will open up a public comment, see if anyone would like to speak on this item. See none, close the public comment, bring it back for the council for the key.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, but I, with the caveat, we do come back with language, you know, for council, you know, to follow exactly as our city attorney, you know, addressed it.
I'll second.
A motion was made by Councilmember Barrows and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to approve the recommended item and direct staff to bring a report back to the council related to future approvals of candidate forums.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 9C, city manager, do we have reports?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 9C is a request by the Fine Arts and Historical Commission as it relates to a potential new event for consideration. And the details of the request will be presented by the commission's liaison, Kathy Matsumoto. And following her presentation, she and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The Fine Arts and Historical Commission is appointed by the city council as an advisory body for matters relating to public art and the history of the city of Cerritos. As with all commissions and committees, this commission serves at the pleasure of the city council. The commission has no approval authority, nor are they granted the ability to commission special projects or direct the use of city resources, including staff time, without the approval of the city council. Should a commissioner committee wish to consider a special project which would require the use of city resources, then a formal request must be made to the city council for review and approval. The city council adopted City Policy 6.02.050 to establish a formal policy to guide the commission and committees on their scope of authority for such requests. At the regular meeting of the Fine Arts and Historical Commission on November 21st, 2024, the commission reviewed a request that was suggested by Commissioner Matt Cobble for an art festival that would be presented at either the Cerritos Civic Center or the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. This idea originated from a publication that is titled "The Economic Power of Public Art", which includes a section on how to start an art festival. The purpose of this type of event would be to promote the arts in the community by, by inviting artists to participate in the event. This would also generate new revenue and economic growth to the city through the sale of artwork, increased tourism and hotel transient occupancy taxes, spending at our retail stores and restaurants and increased ticket sales to the CCPA. In accordance with a policy approved by the city council, staff presented this report to the commission for their review and consideration of Commissioner Cobble's suggestion. By unanimous vote, the commission supported the idea that the city council evaluate and consider a feasibility study for an art festival at the Civic Center or the CCPA. It is recommended that the city council review the information that has been presented by staff pursuant to Policy 6.02.050 and approve one of the following options. The first one would be to approve the feasibility study of an art festival suggested by the Arts Commission and authorize the use of city resources and direct staff to report back to the city council on the feasibility of an art festival and the potential plan for implementing the project if feasible. Refer the matter back to the Fine Arts and Historical Commission with modifications. That would be your second option. And the third option would be to deny the Fine Arts and Historical Commission-initiated requests. This concludes my presentation. And Mr. Lopez, Mrs. Hilton, or I will be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you for the report, Kathy. Does the councilor has any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kathy, for the report. I actually had the great opportunity to go to Loveland this year with Kathy and Annie and a couple of our fine arts commissioners. The question I have is the art festival that we're. The question I have is, the art festival that we're considering tonight, the artists, are they... Would it be the artists, the same artists we would be inviting from Loveland? I mean, what are the caliber of artists are we talking about? Local artists, the Loveland artists?
Well, that would be part of the feasibility study. You know, it could be, especially in the beginning, to start small and then see this grow. As you recall, the Loveland Festival, it has been celebrating its 40th anniversary. So you could not expect that within the first five, 10 years, or maybe 40.
Yes.
But that would... Everything would be part of a feasibility study. Staff has not really initiated any formal thoughts. We all have our personal thoughts. But as far as gathering facts and putting together our thoughts, we haven't done that yet.
All right. And the arts festival is limited just to art sculptures, similar to what we have in our city? Are we talking paintings? Are we talking...
As was proposed to at the meeting.
Kathy, if I can interrupt. We've had discussions in the past. The sculpture is only one type of art, and one of our strengths is our Performing Arts Center. So we could have a jazz festival-type thing, it could be different types of music, but we could use even Don Conami Park, you know, with the competition leading towards, you know, the use of the theater, you know, by winning, you know, group artists or whatever it is. But even in New Orleans, they have multiple stages, you know, so it's spread out, it takes up more room. We do have something that most cities don't have, just by virtue of the fact that we do have a park that's large enough to do something different, and we have the theater. So the sculpture, the thing about Loveland, which you... It's easy to assume it's local artists. But I've met artists from, you know, outside of the U.S. that were there. We have artists from Alaska all the way to the East Coast. You know, since one of the premier events before COVID. So there's a lot of different ways to look at it. So we need to look at, you know, the amount of art, you know, the choices. And I've been a big advocate, because it does, it draws a lot of people to a community. I mean, you look at New Orleans, at the time, Mayor Mark Morial was there, and he mentioned that it draws people from throughout the world to it. But like Kathy points out, it takes time to build it. And I'm not sure, you know, exactly which way we should go, but my own personal belief is we ought to do something with it. We're right in the center of LA County. You know, we can draw better than Laguna Beach or San Pedro, you know, places where you draw a circle and you get the ocean, you get the mountains in. They don't have people in those areas. You know, we have access to, I think, a very, very great, you know, amount of people that could accomplish a whole lot of things for us.
That's all I have for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you know any more questions, I will now open for public comments on these items. Say none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back for the Council comments. Did you hear comments, Linda, again?
So I support a program. Is this... So, moving forward, I would hope that you would also consider location. I know that's something to be talked about. For me, the Cerrito Center for the Performing Arts would be the location. And with that, I would hope that it would time with the season-opening sales of tickets, so that it would not just draw folks to the art festival, but we could also promote our theater season and get people to buy their tickets early. They both go together, art and culture, and we can promote both at the same time. I'm hoping it would be also a festival style with food booths. I mean, these are just suggestions I have. I don't know what my colleagues may have. Also, to seek guidance from the LA County Arts Commission for possible grants or resources and sponsorships as well, hopefully from our Fourth District Supervisor, Supervisor Hahn. And like Kathy had said, to start small and grow it big. However, I wanted to know, and because we discussed this during our pickleball conversation, though, Bruce, is this something we should move forward now, or maybe wait for the new Council to come in? What do you think? Because there's going to be a lot of input made by the Council. It's gonna... Should we wait? Table it?
I'll throw my two cents, and I think this is where an ad hoc committee would work, because you need to have some information for the budget. If you wait too long on this one, you're going to miss the next two summers. And if you really think about it, you know, like when you went to Loveland, that was the second weekend in August. It's kind of a dead period with a lot of people vacationing. That's why they, you know, they go to these things. I think if any work that we do between now and then would be helpful. And if we were to direct staff with a consensus, you know, to go ahead and start, I think the process is we can get this thing moving and be able to budget something in this budget to move it forward. And if... I don't think there's any way to get it started this summer.
No, I don't think so.
It's going to be another year out, so...
And if you could...
If that's something you want to volunteer for, I'll support it, you know, to be on an ad hoc committee, get it started, and have, you know, you and staff bring something back either before or after the election. But it has to be done in time to go ahead and finalize the budget. So that's going to drive it. You know, I'm just thinking, time goes by quick.
Yes, it does. Well, I appreciate that, Bruce. Thanks. So I would like to then ask Council consensus to move forward, to ask the City Manager to direct staff to develop an ad hoc committee?
No, we're saying you.
I'm the ad hoc?
Yeah.
You are the ad hoc.
I'm the ad hoc with staff.
Okay. Robert's shaking his head. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
So, anyway, that'd be my motion then.
Okay. I will support your motion.
It's just not even consent to make a motion to have that happen.
I second the motion. Thank you.
And I apologize if I can seek a little bit of clarification. I believe we have a motion made by Councilmember Barrows, seconded by Councilmember Johnson to initiate an ad hoc working group related to the development of an arts festival.
Plan. Yeah, arts plan, because I think it should be open beyond just the festival. That's a component. And there's... I don't think we're going to go back to what we used to have with, you know, the Friends.
The Family Arts Festival?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be difficult, you know, to resurrect that part of it, but, you know, there's something that we can do. But I'd rather leave it open so that, you know, your hands aren't tied.
Okay.
And neither is the future Council. I mean, I'd really keep it moving forward.
Okay.
So this direction is to establish an ad hoc working group to conduct the feasibility study of an art festival?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, arts program.
Of an arts program. Thank you.
Okay, next item is the item 9D. City Manager, do we have reports on this item?
I'm sorry, do we have to vote?
Yeah, you got 3-1.
The motion passes on a vote of 3 to 1.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 9D is a culmination of a months-long process to review our positions in the city. We've provided updates to the City Council over the past several months. We have a series of resolutions for review and consideration. The details of this will be presented by Director of Administrative Services, Drew Schneider, and following his presentation, he and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. It is my honor tonight to present to you the implementation of the Transformance Consulting Phase IV Study Report. We are asking the City Council to review and consider three resolutions updating the salary tables for Cerritos exempt, non-exempt, and part-time employees in the accompanying amendment. This follows five months of extensive analysis involving over 148 in-depth staff interviews, tours of work sites, reviews of work performed by staff, consultation with supervisors, and the management team. As we have previously discussed at great length, Dr. Rye has performed an extensive analysis of the work performed by full-time employees and made a series of recommendations. Following those recommendations and consultation with the City Council, we conducted lengthy and productive meet-and- confer sessions with the Association of Federal, State, County, and Municipal employees who represent our... represent employees. In addition, we conducted over a dozen briefings and discussions with staff across the city. Each full-time staff member was invited to review and edit their class specification. I do need to point out a couple of quick corrections in the resolution. On the first one, regarding the full-time, non-exempt resolution, we did have an admission of the Librarian II, grade level 49, which is a salary range of $8,064 to $10,055 per month. And we need to get quite a small clarification on the proposed amendment to Article 16 of the MOU and attached Resolution Number 2024-31. The revised language should read, Recreation Service Coordinators assigned a supervisor responsibility during the implementation of a revised rules resulting from the Phase IV study shall receive a $500 per month stipend until the three additional Recreation Services Supervisors are appointed. In addition, as required by Governing Code Section 54953 Subsection C, Subsection 3, I will provide a verbal report and proposed compensation for local agency executives. Based upon the analysis performed by Dr. Rye of Transformance Consulting and the external equity analysis of the city's 16 comparative cities, staff recommends the following compensation levels for local agency executives. The Assistant City Manager and Deputy City Manager positions are proposed at grade level 68 with a monthly salary of $13,526, ranging up to $16,724. Department Directors, including Administrative Services, Community Cultural Services, Community Development, Public Works, Public Work/City Engineer, the Theater Executive Director, and the City Clerk are proposed at grade level 74, $15,577, upwards of $19,277. Finally, the Senior City Manager position is proposed at grade level 79, with a range from $17,140 to a high of $21,234 per month. As we have discussed this item at great length previously, I'm going to be briefing my report tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Mr. Lopez and I are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Drew, for the report. The Council has a question for staff? No? All right, if it's none, I'll bring it to... From the public, if anybody else would like to speak on this item? Say none, we'll bring it back for the Council's action.
Move approval.
I just have a quick comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all of our employees for their support and participation during this classification and compensation study. Thank you to Dr. Lena Rye as well for her thoroughness in establishing equity throughout our organization. And thank you, Drew, for working very closely with her. You know, it was a lot of months of hard work. The hard work by all should help our city recruit and retain employees so that we can provide increase and an increase in excellent service to our residents. So thank you very much.
Second the motion.
Do we have motion and second?
Motion was made by Councilmember Barrows and seconded by Councilmember Yokoyama to approve staff's recommendation.
And the electronic voting is active?
And the motion passes on a vote of 4 to 0.
Next item is the item 10. City Manager, do we have any legislative item?
No, sir. We don't have any legislative items this evening on either 10A or 10B.
Okay. Item 11, report from City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have two items this evening. The first item is, as it relates to our Theater Department, we do have, on behalf of Jeff Tulkey, who is at a conference related to theater management this week, we do have with us Paula Eagleman, Management Analyst in the Theater Department. I would like to note that Paula was promoted to the position of Management Analyst last fall, and she's been hard at work in addressing several matters related to contracts and other items related to the administration of the theater. Paula's been an employee of the city for over 20 years. She began in 2004 as a Stage Assistant II, has worked her way into multiple roles at the city. Most recently, she was the Stage Crew Supervisor and was in that role for a number of years. But now, in the administrative side of the theater, is performing many additional duties on behalf of the theater team. Paula is currently pursuing a master's degree. It's a joint MFA and MBA in theater management at Cal State Long Beach, and we're very proud to have her in this role in the team. And with that, I'm going to defer to her to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the city and the team here for the promotion, and I look forward to continuing to work with the city, the team at the CCPA, and the executive team here, and the City Council to execute the vision of the Council for the CCPA and the city, and to continue to provide excellent customer service that we strive for at the CCPA and throughout the city. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Paula.
Here have one other item, please. I would like to defer to Captain Drew Strong to provide some updates. As the City Council is aware, there was a series of directives given related to public safety measures, and we do have some updates as it relates to statistics and areas of improvement that we've seen in the community. So I'd like to defer to Captain Strong to provide a brief overview of actions taken since last month.
Thank you for the opportunity. So thank you for the opportunity to speak about our efforts as it relates to burglaries in Cerritos. As many of you know, burglaries increased substantially in 2024. They were up 39% from 2023. Beginning November 5, 2024, as a response to citizens' concerns regarding residential burglaries, the city and the Sheriff's Department worked collectively to combat residential burglaries. We began dispatching residential burglary calls as priorities. Automated license plate reader cameras were installed around the mall and the auto center. The city allocated $50,000 worth of overtime for two one-person patrol cars to respond to audible alarms and perform saturation patrols in the hardest-hit areas. Drones were also approved for use in the city of Cerritos by the Sheriff's Department. Major Crimes Bureau began performing operations throughout the city. The Special Detachment Team continued to perform saturation patrols throughout the city. Pharmacies were entered into our computer system as priority responses due to numerous recent pharmacy burglaries. Volunteers on patrol continued performing patrol checks in the areas hardest hit by burglaries. We also placed a deputy in the Neighborhood Watch Program to bridge the gap between the community and the deputies that serve them. We performed probation and parole compliance checks at residences of convicted criminals. The city funded three new security guards to perform patrols throughout the city. After implementing these changes, I collected data from the past two months, starting November 5, 2024, through January 5, 2025, to monitor the results of these changes. From November 5, 2024 to January 5, 2025, we experienced a decrease of 12.1% in residential burglaries. We brought response times to residential burglary alarm calls down from 14 minutes to 7.3 minutes. In fact, after looking at the numbers, we brought every category of response times down from the month prior. This included routine calls, priority calls, and emerging calls. This serves as a testimony to the dedication of the City Council to support the deputies and the tireless efforts of the deputies to serve the community. I've been contacted by residents who recently observed deputies patrolling their neighborhoods and expressed their appreciation for those patrol checks. I want to speak about the progress next of the drone program in Cerritos. As you know, drones have been approved by LASD for use in Cerritos. We have currently selected deputies who will be operating the drones. The deputies have been provided the study material for the FAA test for drone operators. We're aiming for deputies to take the test by the end of February. After the test has been completed, the deputies will undergo a drone operator practical application course through the Department's Special Enforcement Bureau. After completing the course, they are certified to use drones in the field. Lastly, I wanted to highlight a greater rest made by the deputies on December 3, 2024. On the indicated date, deputies received a priority audible alarm call at 13737 Artesia Boulevard, Unit 201 and 202 in Cerritos, doing business as Medicine Man Pharmacy. The call stated two males were breaking into the location. Deputies responded and located the two males in front of the business. They ordered them to stop, and the suspect refused to comply with the orders. They entered their vehicle, and they drove away. Deputies initiated a vehicle pursuit and chased the suspects. After the vehicle pursuit, the suspects fled from their vehicle on foot and were apprehended shortly after. Upon locating the suspects, a search of their vehicle revealed a radio signal jammer, burglary tools, and multiple... burglary tools, and multiple fake paper license plates. The district attorney filed felony burglary charges on the suspects. Overall, I believe we're headed in the right direction, and I'm confident we will experience more success as we continue to work together fighting residential burglaries. This concludes my update on the response to our residential burglaries. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask.
Excellent.
Thank you. Great job. I do have a question that the private security, I thought we were going to have them put Cerritos' security. And yesterday, I asked the guy, he said, oh, they gave us, the company gave us, an old vehicle was sitting in our garage.
I'd be happy to answer that, Mayor Solanke. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, we are going to label them, so we have an order in for the magnetic Cerritos city seals that will be going on there with labels. We did receive an initial order. It was substandard, so we couldn't use it. We had to reorder, and we expect to have those in within a week. But those vehicles will be marked with the Cerritos seal and city of Cerritos, so everybody knows that they are representing the city.
Great, thank you.
Captain Drew, I want to point something out. Obviously, I've been around since before we built the sheriff station. I want to say this is the first time we've seen a captain move as quickly as you have to implement, you know, new ideas, and especially with those that bring good results. I just want to congratulate you for that and thank you for, you know, your service on it.
Well, I appreciate that, sir. You know, the citizens really let us know what they wanted, and we heard them, and we replied and responded. So that's our job. That's what we aim for, and I couldn't do this without the deputies. It's all the credit goes to them, sir. I'm just, I'm just the person that orchestrates things. They do all the hard work. Their boots are on the ground. They're at the fires tonight, and they're not with their families, so they're the ones that do all the hard work, sir.
No, I recognize that, you know, that's true. But still, you need a leader that's willing to go ahead and take a risk, to go ahead and recommend changes, you know, from, you know, what has been the normal in the past. And so I don't want to dismiss or overlook, you know, the good job that the deputies are doing, because, you know, they are. But I just want to thank you for what you, you know, how you took it and jumped on it.
You're very welcome, sir.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Drew, for the report, and I also appreciate the results that we've been getting with the new implementation of mitigating our public safety issues. I was speaking, I was in Sacramento over the weekend, and I was, happened to speak to a city manager from another city. They too use the same company that we use for the private security. However, they have theirs on a twenty-four-seven type of schedule. I want us to be a little more proactive. I know we have a five-day-a-week, forty-hour schedule, but I also want to do better for our residents, make it safer twenty-four-seven. Maybe with council consensus, I'd like to direct the city manager to do a feasibility study on the, what a contract would look like to be twenty-four-seven for our city.
Yes. Would that be within the confines? You got to come back with the report at the end of this trial period, anyway.
That is correct. We are, we are operating on a provisional contract just to get it up and running, but at some point in the near future, we're actually getting information from them on a more formal contract, for that we'll have to become to the city council. And if the city council would like, we can explore costs associated with that additional service.
Yeah, I think at that time, if you bring that report, might as well just bring it forward, what would it cost for twenty-four-seven?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, I, okay, we have councils communication. I'll start with Linda Johnson.
Thank you. I'm going to forego my report and instead highlight what our city does for our employees here, and I really want to thank our city manager, Robert Lopez, as well as our executive team for their compassion towards our Cerritos employees who may be impacted by the wildfires that are going on right now, offering resources and assistance during this crisis. So I really do want to thank leadership at our city for recognizing that even though we are not directly impacted by the fires, that we, that some of our employees may be, and even for those that are working outside or anything with outdoor activity. So I really want to appreciate, Robert, you addressing that with the employees today. And I also want to thank our first responders. Thank you, Drew. I know that you and your colleagues within the LASD are out there, and I appreciate what they're doing and doing for our city as well, and to our firefighters as well. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Frank?
Thank you. I do want to thank the captain of our Cerritos Sheriff's Station and our Public Safety Manager, Darrell Evans, for everything you and your hard-working team is doing to keep Cerritos safe. I appreciate it. Our residents appreciate it. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the update. I wanted to let, you know, the residents know that the city council is constantly getting emails and written reports from Darrell Evans, letting us know, keeping us updated about law enforcement incidents in the city of Cerritos. I feel informed about our city because of the constant updates from Darrell Evans. Thank you, Darrell, and for always taking my phone calls when I have questions about these law enforcement incidents. You answer the questions, and you get back to the council. Thank you. On December thirteenth, I was excited to see the residents of Cerritos from the Santa float with my family, especially it was so, it's so memorable to me that my mom was on the Santa float with me and my family, and my daughter, who literally drove back from UC Davis minutes before the float left the corporate yard. So thank you to the city staff and Sherri Titus for everything you did to make that Santa float possible for my family and I and my daughter and my mom to celebrate with the residents of Cerritos that night of December thirteenth. On December seventeenth, I attended the swearing-in of the new and returning ABC Unified School District School Board members with my colleague Linda Johnson. We presented, Linda and I presented a proclamation to outgoing ABC School Board President Sofia Say, and I was blessed to be there for the swearing-in of the new school board members, Artesia's Letty Mendoza. But it really meant a lot to me that for the city of Cerritos trustee, trustee area, my little sister Tatiana Yokoyama Bowie was sworn in as a school board member that night. And she was, we were blessed that she was sworn in by the new council member. I'm sorry, the new United States Congress member representing our city of Cerritos, Derek Tran, sworn in, my sister, as a new ABC School Board member. And then during the meeting, they, the ABC School Board selected their new leadership, and Cerritos's, one of Cerritos' school board members, Ernie Nishi, was selected as president. Congratulations to Ernie Nishi. Congratulations to Francisco Noiola, who was selected by his colleagues to be the new vice president of the ABC School Board. And again, I am blessed that my little sister Tatiana Yokoyama Bowie was selected by her colleagues to be the new clerk of the ABC School Board. On January sixth and seven, I attended the California Contract Cities Association two thousand twenty-five legislative tour in our state's capital, Sacramento, with my colleague, Councilmember Linda Johnson. We had the opportunity to collaborate and learn with many of our local electeds, meeting and develop communication and communication collaboration with our local electeds. And plus, we had the opportunities during the sessions to meet and discuss the city of Cerritos with numerous assembly members and state senators. And Linda and I also got to talk with Attorney General Robbanta, who was one of the keynote speakers. Linda and I also had office meetings to discuss the city of Cerritos with our Assembly Member Sharon Kirk-Silva. We also met with newly-elected Assembly Member Jessica Colosa. I was able to also meet with newly-elected State Senator Christopher Cabaldin and our new neighboring Assembly Member Jose Luis Salache. So I feel really good about a productive trip for the city of Cerritos, for Linda and I to build those relationships with our state leaders, with the goal of getting them to help the city of Cerritos and all of our residents. Thank you.
Bruce? That's the true report.
Thank you. I got nothing of that. Next, we will go to, I guess, city attorney will announce the close session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We will now go into close session to discuss item twelve A and twelve B conference with labor negotiators with respect to ASME Local six nineteen, as well as the full-time exempt employees. There's nothing to report on twelve C, so we will not be holding a close session on that item, and we will be deferring item twelve B to a later council meeting.
Okay, I did forget one item. On Monday, January twenty-eighth, city of Cerritos will host ceremony in celebration of Dr. Martin Little King, Jr. The event will take place in the Sierra Room at Cerritos Center for Performing Arts and will begin at ten AM. We will look forward to welcoming community and enjoy the celebration, and here's the flyer if anybody wants to see it. Okay. Zoom in, yeah. With that, we will now go to the close session, and the regular meeting is adjourned.